Renatus? Okay.
Good morning, how are you?
Hey, Barbara.
Good.
I shouldn't say Corona, maybe a Pacifico.
There you go. Well, this is, it's five o'clock somewhere, right?
It's gotta be.
Yes.
Yes.
Call in instead of going through a panel.
Hello? Huh? Okay. Yes. He'll be what?
He'll be there in two minutes.
Is it Peter? Okay. Oh, good morning, everybody. We're, we're a little delayed due to technical. Give us about two to three minutes, we'll be back online. What's, I think, this is a good time for the situation. Good morning, everyone. My name is Jaime Dela Cruz, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, and thank you for attending through all the social medias and in person to today's special meeting of the Board of Supervisors for March 31st at 9:07. Call to order. And then, Pledge of Allegiance, can I have Supervisor Gillia please lead us off?
Yes, sir, I'd be honored to do that. Hopefully, everybody standing down facing the flag, ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic, the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, every being just as one.
Thank you. Now, we go to acknowledge certificate of posting.
Still moving, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you. Now, we'll go through. Pursuant to California Governor Gavin Newsom's executive order 29-20 issued on March 7, 2020, relating to the coronavirus of public meetings and response to the Corona-19 epidemic. Additional members of the Board of Supervisors are allowed to attend the meeting via teleconference and participate in the meeting in the same extent as they will be present. Also, members of the public can participate. And Dulce, will you? Will you educate the community on ways how they can reach out at the me, to the meeting?
Shall I announce that?
There's a few ways the community adds.
Your mic.
Thank you. There's a few ways the community could access our board meeting. One, I want to remind everybody that our meetings are continuously being broadcast through CMAP, and they could watch live through YouTube. In addition to that, we do have Zoom where you are able to, with the meeting ID, one, either call in on your phone. The number to call in. One second is here. You can either call this 1-669-900-6833, or the other number that's also here, which is 1-408-638-0968 via phone. And all you need to enter would be our meeting ID, which we've been posting on our agenda. And. And it's on the first page on bullet item number. Number one, so it says if you're calling by audio, it has our meeting ID towards the bottom of our agenda. In addition to that, you can download the app or go to the Zoom website. And if you have an Android phone, you go into the Google App Store and, and look for Zoom. If you have an Apple, it would be in your App Store, and you, you just download it. People can public comment by pressing through the webinar when you log in. It has a little raise your hand icon, and it's similar to that. It'll show up in the middle of the screen. If you're on your mobile device, you dial star nine to raise your hand from public comments. And we're still following public comment guidelines, so limiting each speaker to three minutes. We ask that you list your first and last name clearly so that the clerk of the board can make note of that. In addition to that, the county you reside in is, is what we're asking. Do you have anything to add? So.
We're done? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Is every meeting, that meeting ID changes correctly?
That is correct, and we're posting the meeting ID as part of the agenda.
Perfect. I just want to make sure people understand that if they have an old meeting ID, that doesn't work. It's whatever's posted on the agenda.
Correct. The phone numbers would be the same, Zoom would be the same, the same YouTube channel, just a different video. The meeting ID is unique to each meeting via Zoom.
Thank you.
Okay, we will continue to. Regular agenda item number one, Health and Human Services, Tracy. All right, you want to start off?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd like to invite up Tracy Belton, our Health and Human Services Director. As, as your board is aware, we're trying to have a weekly update to your board, minimum, depending on the situation. And I've asked our Health and Human Services Director to give an update with COVID-19, how our county is tracking, as well as, I'm going to invite up our PIO. He's going to give a brief update with regards to messaging, unified messaging, as well as Chris Magnagano, our OES manager, to give you a brief update on a request that your board made regarding the National Guard at our last meeting. So, wanted to give you an update with that. So, here's Tracy. Tracy?
Good morning, thank you for having me. So, just a brief update from last week. This is some data over for California as of March 28th. Cases are still drastically increasing. They were 5,283 positive cases in California. The age breakdown is here for you. This information is also available on our website. Wanted to update you on our county data, so we have been working diligently to, to bring new forms of data to the county. We worked on this report as of yesterday. We will be updating this regularly. Time commitment is hard for us to get this posted to our website as numbers are changing drastically and quickly, so we do our best to have it posted and available to the public. By 4:30 was our, our guidance, however, that may change due to more detailed data that we're trying to gather. We do have an increase in cases by three yesterday, we have 17 now. The good news is, is we do have recovered individuals now. I believe our number's at four, so that is a positive thing. This is available on our website. It's also been shared by our PIO, Westrick, on several different social media sites, as well as it's on the county website. Some things to point out in this data, I think people were surprised to see the age. Sorry, I had to split this on three slides to get it to show, but the highest group right now that we have is ages 18 to 49. We have nine active cases in, in that, or nine cases in that age bracket. The next age bracket is 50 to 64, we have six, and two in the older age bracket, which I think it indicates, I can't, over 65, and zero in the younger age. So, it's important to remember to shelter in place and only be out for essential things. If you're an essential employee, it's also important to remember to social distance at work and in the public as well. So, this, this is, hopefully, this data will help the community as well as our board to be aware of what's happening in our county as well as in our state. There's more information on our website for that. Another thing that we have been working on is enforcement for non-essential businesses. If you see here, we do have a large enforcement team who's participating in the enforcement. We've received so far 21 calls. We have a website, I'm sorry, an email and a phone number that's on our website that you can call in when, if you have concerns regarding non-essential businesses that are open. Unfortunately, we, the enforcement team is not addressing concerns around social distancing within facilities that are open, but we are going to be putting out some more guidance on social distancing in grocery stores, in different environments when you go pick up takeout food. It's still important to remember to stay six feet apart. We've received a lot of concerns from the community that people are still crowding each other and not being mindful of that, so it's really important to remember that. We are meeting weekly to, to staff non-essential businesses, and code enforcement has, from the county and the city, as well as environmental health, have been making contact with businesses to inform them that they've been deemed non-essential. So, we will continue this through the shelter in place order. That's really all I have to report, updated from my side. I have Deputy Director Enrique Ariola here to report out on some homeless services. Mr. Chair, you had asked for us to present some more information on that, so he's here to address that as well. So, I can take any questions, or I can hand it over to him.
Any questions to Tracy, Supervisor Patelin?
Thank you. Question I have, Tracy, is, you know, is the supplies, and our hospital is probably, you know, like all the other hospitals in the whole country, is try and grab their fair share of supplies. How, how is the governor going to distribute the, the supplies that they've been successful in, in getting to the, to the hospitals, and especially the smaller hospitals? Are we going to get our fair share of that, or?
That's an excellent question. I think Chris can probably answer that better than I can. She's operating our Emergency Operations Center and probably has information on that, so I'm going to defer that to her, or Ray can possibly share if he has any info. I think Chris is probably the best person to share on that.
Okay.
But I know she's actively working on it. I do know that for sure.
Okay, and maybe, and a second question I have, and is, you know, testing is absolutely critical as far as knowing where the community is at, and I think that's one of the things that the whole nation was kind of behind, and now we're catching up. Is Hazel Hawkins kind of online to get, you know, our fair share of tests to the people that, that need the testing, or are we farming that out, or how is that working?
They, they continue to perform the testing at the hospital. You know, they have to meet criteria for the testing, which I shared the change in the, in the guidance for the testing. So, if you looked at our data, there were, I can go back really fast, there were several tests that were negative. And so, if you look here, let me just look at here, get the numbers for you. 172 individuals have tested negative, and there are 35 that are pending. So, there's a higher rate of negative tests than positive tests, which is great, and I think that's why the guidance is, has changed, is because there have been a lot of negative tests. So, our, our hospital is doing a really good job of triaging the people as they come in to ensure that they meet the guidance to perform the tests.
Thank you.
Tracy, I got a question. Compared our Hazel Hawkins, in terms of activities and Coronas and testing, and then compared to the one in Gilroy, Morgan Hills, San Jose, is, are they having more activity than here in San Diego County?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
I guess is, is the Corona activity higher? Are those hospitals testing more, more patients, testing more people? Are they getting more positive results, or they're just, are they allocating more resources than what's happening in San Diego County?
I'm, I don't know the answer to that for sure. If the other counties are test, I, I'm assuming that the guidance has come down on who to test, so I would hope that statewide, they're following the guidance. I don't have the data on county to county data, but we could look into it if you'd like us to.
Yeah, because, you know, I know that, my understanding is that the San Francisco area counties are going to extend the, the shelter in place, and that's something that the board will discuss later on. But I, I imagine it's because their, the activities is more, it's active over there compared to San Diego County, and, you know, knock on wood, I think, you know, we've got to be, we've got to be doing a good job, or, or we've just been lucky. I, I don't know the answer, but I think it's probably a combination of everything.
Yeah, I would suspect until we see a flattening of the curve, that shelter in place is going to be considered statewide. I would make that assumption.
Yeah. Who? Vice Chair. Oh, Supervisor Gillia?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. Tracy, I just wanted to point out to you and your team that this new amount of data that's going out is exactly what, at least, a lot of folks in the community have been asking me about, asking me for. It's very professionally laid out, and I just wanted to say thank you very much, because I know you're inundated with everything else you guys are doing, and to put this together was a big deal and answered a lot of questions for people, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Our epidemiologist, who was a new position, has been working diligently on this, and so she's doing an excellent job gathering the data for us, so I want to recognize her as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? None? Do you have anyone from the public?
If you wish to make a public comment, hit star nine now on your phone, or if you're using the app, please raise your hand and we'll get to you.
None? Okay, we'll close public. Ray, you have?
Yeah, we just have some more to discuss on COVID-19.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to invite up our PIO next. Thank you, Tracy. Actually, homeless.
Yeah.
Homeless, I'm first, sorry about that. Yeah, homeless, homelessness, and then our PIO.
Good morning, members of the board and the public. I just want to give a quick update on the efforts that we are currently providing to assist our homeless families and homeless individuals. So, I wanted just to give a quick update on the winter shelter program, being one of the programs that we have been providing. This program served 20 families, and today is the day that they are exiting the program, three of which has gotten permanent housing, and approximately seven are going into other families, friends, or, or family members, and seven, and 10 of them, excuse me, are receiving hotel vouchers for at least another 30-day increments. So, that's the winter shelter program. The Home Resource Center is averaging between 43 and 45 individuals on a nightly basis. The female dormitories are the ones that usually have about five or six openings, and the males are usually full or have about one opening on any given night. There's different measures that are currently being taken to address safety concerns to COVID-19. One is they've expanded the hours of operation. You know, they used to operate between 4:00 PM and 8:00 AM. They, they added the day shift, so it's 24 hours a day currently. There's been added two washing stations on the courtyard, and they've been delivered, and it says to help convey the message to sanitize and keep clean, wash your hands at all times that you, that you can, and also maintaining social distancing that is being implemented. For meals, the meal area is kind of confined, so what they've done is allowed the patio, the courtyard for eating as well to, to try to get social distancing. And. Okay, so that's the Home Resource Center. One other thing about the Home Resource Center, so janitorial services are being provided two times a day, again, try to help maintain a clean environment, so that's, they're going twice a day. And hotel vouchers is also being provided. We did receive funding from the state. We got our first allocation from the state, the governor's emergency funding, in the amount of $51,000, a little plus 51. There's also a second allocation that's coming to the county through the continuum of care to end homelessness. That allocation's a little over $55,000. We have not received those funds. Nevertheless, we are planning and utilizing them in a number of activities, and primarily as hotel vouchers. One thing we did find out in meeting with a local hotel in, in trying to lease rooms, they're unable to lease rooms to us because they don't want to mix populations. So, the leasing or renting or hotels on a nightly basis are individuals that are in need, not necessarily those that have COVID-19. So, we're working diligently with local hotels. We've also provided rental assistance. One thing that we did have been seeing, we've been receiving calls from the public that are, have difficulties meeting the rent and have a fear of not being able to make rent and being evicted, so that's, those are some calls that we've been getting. You know, through services that we've been providing over the month of March, we provided about 25 households with rental assistance in the month of March, and these includes homeless families that we have been providing to in the past. We did work with a continuum of care to end homelessness, our COC, with sanitation stations. So, I mentioned that two washing stations were provided at the Home Resource Center, one sanitation station, which includes a porta potty and a washing station at the labor camp, and four at the migrant center for porta potties and four washing stations. So, that's been a resource that has been, been provided by the COC through COC funding. And we're also in the process of identifying a, a facility location to house individuals that have tested positive for COVID-19. That's being in the works. There is a need, and I think that as time goes by, it's important to have that in place, and also discussions on working with the state and try to secure trailers, RVs for that same purpose. So, that's a quick update. We're also dedicating some funds for other, other needs such as food vouchers, utility assistance. So, we're, we're trying to just work to the best of our ability with the funds that we have currently in place.
Thank you. Any questions? Supervisor Patelin?
Yeah, thanks. Enrique, you mentioned that you're trying to secure a place for individuals that may test positive for COVID-19. And does that make sense to kind of work with our neighboring counties as far as a facility that would take and isolate homeless people? Hopefully, it's not, it'd be a real big number, and. You know, it's so specialized. Is that something that we could work with Monterey County or Santa Cruz County, because they probably have the same issue and problem?
That is a very good question, and I'd be more than happy to follow up and see what our nearby counties are doing, and also and see if there's a possibility to work with them in, in addressing this effort.
Yeah, because that kind of, I, I think it's, it would be so hard for us to find that particular facility here to accommodate individuals unless they're a hospital. I, that's a little different, but if they could go home, it, it might be interesting to see what they're doing.
I think it's worth pursuing both options. What are nearby counties doing? Can we work with them? And also, at the same time, look at moving something forward here locally in the event that we're unable to work with other counties.
Thank you.
I appreciate your, the feedback you're giving us. Unfortunately, it doesn't prevent the potential of spread among the homeless members of our community, because if some of them have it and, and they just walk the streets and just, they're out with their, out with their business, they'll be spreading it out there. So, somehow, we've got to make sure that, that we come together and, and work together with them to ensure that if, if, in that community, they're, they're getting the coronavirus, that somehow we, we're working with them, and I know we have the shelter out there in place. I know we, we're about to provide shelters, vouchers, and all these things. However, what are you doing to make sure that the, the spread is not happening within the homeless community?
So, currently, the only effort that we have right now are the shelters that we have in place. Our shelter doesn't have the capacity to address all the homeless individuals that are in, in our different areas of our community. Our shelter doesn't have the capacity to address all the homeless individuals that are in, in our different areas of our community. And, but what I could say is that those that are in our shelter, they're always encouraged that they have to remain there unless it's essential, they have to get medication, or they have to go for other needs. But the goal is to maintain them, to prevent them from roaming around the streets. But it is an issue. It's not an easy fix. We don't have a larger facility, and so it is, it is an issue that still needs to be addressed.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
So, I just wanted to add that we have been working, administration's been working with Health and Human Services and Enrique's team on obtaining a site or a facility to actually address that issue. So, we'll have more to come with your board probably in the next week or so.
Are we, at a minimum, when somebody comes into a facility, we take their temperature? Are we doing that now?
So, there's a protocol that is currently being developed, and which includes taking the temperature. And there's been issues with acquiring a thermometer that is touchless, and there's one, a couple that are being identified and being ordered. So, they, our subrecipient, the Community Homeless Solutions, has struggled, and they've asked around from public health to the hospitals to different, both counties, Monterey County and, and within this county. We did have a meeting with Community Homeless Solutions yesterday, and part of the protocol includes that anyone coming in will take the temperature, and it'll be documented daily basis. So, the protocols are almost to finalize. It's a matter of securing the equipment, so we're in the process of doing that.
Okay. Thank you, and take care. Any other questions, comments? None? All right. Next presentation?
I would like to invite up our PIO, David Westrick.
Good morning, I'm the morning chair and board. A couple of things. We've been very busy at the PIO office, and I wanted to make sure that we all know that we are working very hard with Public Health and the other cities and other agencies. Tracy submitted to your, for your, to see this morning, the, the letter that, or actually, the newsletter that, or I'm sorry, the community update that they put out hopefully every day. I will have an opt-in link that I will send to all of the electeds in the entire county, as plus also on all of our social channels, that allow the public to actually receive that letter when we, we get it in. I'll actually send it out to them hopefully daily, if we can get it daily as well. Internal messaging, we're working on that as well. We set up groups with all the elected officials in the county and all of our internal EOC groups. Our next group to target is going to be our employees. The really reason why we're doing this is to have the ability, in the case of an emergency, not only for COVID-19, but for anything else, that we can bring them in as soon as we possibly can without using the phone tree. So, it's a one-button thing, and we bring them all in. It also works with you guys as elected officials. If we have a problem that we need to inform you about, it's one button, we can do that as well. Very important that we get those abilities to do that. I've done about 93, I'm sorry, about 102 different press contacts engagements, Zoom and interviews on cameras since we started doing this. Resource guide that the board asked for to be sent out to our residents in this community is done. Elections and the tax collector are actually taking care of that to be mailed out. It is very well done. It was done by Public Health. They did a great job. It's both in Spanish and English. So, kudos to those folks that got that done. We're doing status briefs with our greater EOC group, our employees and our EOC. That's important because it's also about information and resource sharing. And OES is actually the one that's doing all of that mostly. And again, we've done a lot of robust messaging, messaging on our social channels, anywhere from EDC stuff, small business stuff, ecology, and local businesses and stuff that we need to do here in our community as well. I'll take any questions you have.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, David. Appreciate it. I'd like to invite up Chris Mangano.
Oh, how does she get into the presentation?
No, that isn't it. It, she said it's saved on here.
It's National Guard.
There we go. Perfect.
So, good morning, board. Thank you. I've been asked to give an update on, first, on our PPE, Personal Protective Equipment Order. We placed a very large order two weeks ago. We received a big chunk of it last Friday and distributed it yesterday. The hospital received the majority of the items. They were gloves, masks, and hand sanitizer. And then every department received hand sanitizer throughout the county, as well as department heads got it to give to their employees who are currently working. So, we received gallon size for refills, and we received the personal size for every employee. We have another very, very large order that should consist of several pallets that's due later this week. It has gowns, booties, more gloves, more masks, biohazard bags, et cetera, and those will be distributed by priority also. So, that's my update on PPE. We're trying to stay ahead of the game with getting the supplies in. Some things are impossible to get. That'll be on back order. We get, some suppliers aren't taking orders for certain items. Some are back ordering things until May or June. We're, we're going with it. We did do a couple requests to the state for masks. We got those yesterday, and those went out as soon as they came in. So, we're working hard on that.
If I can, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. So, on those, on these supplies, we, we make a request, and we've been getting what we've been requesting, and it sounds like it was pretty prompt. That was kind of what the basis of my earlier question
Yes.
was, and, you know, watching TV and seeing other areas of, of the country with severe shortages of face masks and, and shields and safety gear. I've just been really concerned about our small hospital, our small community. You know, we're not the real loud squeaky wheel when you compare it with, you know, urban areas.
Sure.
But in fairness, we deserve our fair share of it, too. So, so far, we've been able to accommodate our needs.
From our private vendors, correct.
All right.
So, we've paid for those supplies.
Yeah, I, I think that's one of the things that elected leaders, that would be kind of our role to try to push further up the state to make sure we get our fair share, and, but so far, it's been fine.
Yes. Again, that's through our private vendors. Not through the state. What we have asked for from the state, we've been fortunate to get. Some things we haven't. They don't have thermometers. They don't have, I'm trying to think of a few things that I requested that just aren't available. But the items we've ordered from our private vendors have, are arriving.
Okay.
And they're, and we're paying for them as of right now.
Correct.
Subject to federal, state reimbursement.
Correct.
I actually, I got Supervisor Gilliam on the line. Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes, sir. Thank you for picking up on me there, Mr. Chair. I'm raising my hand here in the street, trying to make sure it works right. Yeah, I just wanted to thank Chris for the, for everything she said, especially the last part of comments. That was going to be my question was on the, the state supplies. How are we doing on that? Where are we, where are we headed? Because I know there are a lot of state supplies that landed last week, I think down in Southern California, from the federal government as well. And then also, we got a, a troche of expired products that were recertified by the, I believe it was either the FDA or somebody at the federal government, so we could use all the masks in California. Millions of them in storage. Glad we're getting those and getting them out. How, how's everything else going for you, Chris? Do you need, do you need anything else, any other resources? How's, how's everything else going in the EOC area?
We're doing well at this point. Thank you.
Great. And then the other thing is, I've been kind of harping on this at every meeting, and I know that CIO and I have had several conversations about tracking Stewarts on it, just making sure we're tracking all this, especially on the private money that we're spending, I'm sorry, the private vendors we're purchasing items from, because we're very hopeful that we're going to get reimbursed for these items through the state. So, I just wanted to get a quick update on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Medina?
Yeah, the same thing I was going to say, so.
Thank you.
It is all being tracked. We're working very closely with Stewart, and everything is being entered and coded in our ERP, our billing system. So, we're, we're keeping track of every invoice that comes and goes.
I've got a question for you. How much information do you know about the federal assistance that's coming down to all the hospitals and doctors? Do you know anything about that?
No. No, just what you've heard. I've received the same flyers, the same announcements.
I was actually talking to Ken Underwood yesterday about that, and, okay. Don't worry about it. Okay. All right, let's open it up. Does that conclude your presentation?
No.
Nope?
I was also going to discuss, the Office of Emergency Services contacted Community Food Bank at the board's request a couple, two weeks ago, and discussed with them. They had started to do drive-through pickup for their grocery distribution or their food distribution, and we had noticed some traffic issues. So, we contacted them and recommended a point of distribution or POD, a secondary location basically for food distribution. And with that option of opening a second location comes the need for additional personnel. So, at the recommendation of the board, we, we suggested utilizing the National Guard that was made available to each county and through the Office of Emergency Services. That's not a program that is through their law division. It's actually through the Office of Emergency Services. So, we, as, the National Guard's been tasked with humanitarian mission serving food banks during the COVID pandemic. So, I reached out to Santa Cruz County to get their feedback on how the National Guard worked with the Second Harvest Food Bank this past weekend, and the quote from their director said, "Due to the overwhelming need in Santa Cruz County, the food bank relocated to the fairgrounds in Watsonville for food distribution." Aside from the monumental assistance at the Second Harvest Warehouse operations, instilling confidence and peace of mind for the staff and volunteers alike with their calm demeanor and methodical approach to tasks, their humanitarian assistance made food distribution to 1,900 cars representing 2,400 households. And that happened in four hours. So, they did have sheriff's deputies on site for security and CHP for traffic control because the fairgrounds is located on 152, so they had to use CHP for state purposes. But they felt the National Guard provided an invaluable resource, helping them provide a critical service to their residents. And the men, the National Guard's men and women do not carry weapons. They are not wearing masks. They provide order and structure, reassurance, and confidence during this very unsure time. They can also add additional resources should we need another distribution site, or they can provide services to us if we open an alternate care site in conjunction with a hospital and public health. So, I'd like us to consider bringing the National Guard in to use for this humanitarian support at the food bank, again, to provide support and volunteerism just to the food bank for this mission.
Thank you. Supervisor Patelam?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate that, Chris. And I know Supervisor Medina and myself have had some concerns of, you know, adequate help down at the food bank. I want to thank some of our county employees for helping as well. Very important. And I think having, if, if we could do something similar to what Santa Cruz County is doing with their, with additional help with the National Guard, I think that presence is reassuring, and I, I really think under the circumstances that we find ourselves under kind of an insurance plan as well, if something else kind of pops up during this period of time. But knowing that we have enough help between the volunteers and the National Guard to get the food and help out to those in need, I think it's a great opportunity and option for us.
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
Just because there's no been any expla, well, as far as I know, I don't, I didn't hear anything from Chris that there was any kind of explanation to the public. Because I know since the war around, that they would, you know, to a certain extent, you know, we see military folks, right? The military here. But even outside of that, I, I still haven't had any clarity as far as what the, you know, what the safety protocol was having basically outside of our community folks coming in. Are they getting, and, you know, if there are, if it's once a week, so they're basically going home to wherever they live, and then if they come back or, or, you know, some of this, I mean, all those, the way, or maybe to try to, so how do we, how do we guarantee that these reservists aren't, you know, getting in, in, you know, some kind of, you know, they, they don't, they don't get exposed to COVID-19 somewhere else and then come back to the county with this? How are we testing them, or is there any protocol for that? And to certain, and I, I know, talking to the community, who thinks, Maria mentioned that they needed people at the greatest extent, maybe 30 people, so it's like 35 people. So, so do we need 35 people when we have a lot of volunteer organizations locally? And this, right now, the setup is all going to be no contact. So, so it'd be no contact. I mean, there's, those protocols are safe, and as long as you have gloves and the social distancing, I, I saw the mask or the break, how they're going to do it. I mean, it's, it's pretty clear that they're going to establish a no-contact protocol. So, I'm just curious if this is like too much in our community, like, do we really need it?
Supervisor, this is Chris Mangano. Some of your conversation or your comments were broken up, but I'll try to answer what I could pick out. They will be social distancing. They do respect that. They have, they're briefed on what they can and can't do, and they're very aware of COVID and the guidelines. They're, the request from the food bank from Maria has been for five volunteers Wednesday, 10 volunteers on Friday, and five on Saturday. And that's what she's requested for the duration of this event with two distribution sites. And that's what the order or the request to the National Guard would be. They would handle the forklift driving, the heavy moving, and packaging, and distribution, maintaining the social distance. I don't know if I'm missing other comments we heard.
Well, he, he kind of, he kind of talked to me the, the night before, and I kind of know what his questions are, and I will share what he thinks, because I think the same way. And I think that at this time, when we're looking at maybe, you know, 20 to 30 volunteers, I'm willing to bet there are a lot of good, kind people in the, in our community that can backfill those, those, those volunteer needs. I, I just, I support the, the National Guard, I just don't want them here today, right now. I think that we need to, need to work with them ourselves first, ask members of the community to come in and, and pitch in and support. If I didn't have a weak immune system, I'll be out there myself helping out. And, you know, in fact, even these, these military people, they have families, they have to go back home, too, and we definitely don't want them getting the coronavirus in San Antonio County or them bringing in a coronavirus into our community. And I just, I'm just not ready to accept that, because it's, the, the next phase is, you know, martial law, and I just don't want that to happen, and I don't want that perception.
Well, that is not the order from the governor.
I don't care what the governor says. I'm just giving you what my opinion is. And my opinion is that I don't want to see him in San Antonio County. I prefer that members of the community help out and pitch out, and let's all work together. That's my position. Supervisor Medina?
Well, you know, my position differs from what you're saying, simply because the National Guard, if we brought them here to help out, that's what they're for. That's what we have, the National Guard. We, we pay, we, they work for, they work for the state. And when you think about what's going on, and I think you've said it many times, and so has the mayor, is stay in place. Don't go anywhere. So, now you're telling people to go volunteer. So, that's sending a mixed message. The whole idea here is stay home, let these professionals that have been, I mean, they're, they're trained. They're trained for this stuff. So let's take advantage of this and alleviate some of the stress from our own people and let the professionals that do this day in and day out work on this. That's how I feel.
Thank you Supervisor Medina. Do we have, who do we have?
Mr. Chair.
Hold on Supervisor Hernandez, I'll give you an opportunity to speak. I got Supervisor Gilio on the line first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let my video boot up there, there we go. Yeah, I wanted to say that I support this 100%. And the, we need to keep in mind, this, somebody mentioned martial law, this is not martial law. The, as we know, in earthquakes and any type of natural disasters, the National Guard has the ability to help and humanitarian. This is not enforcement, be critical, this is not martial law. I'm disappointed that that even came up. This is the ability for a group of professionals that are trained to handle infectious diseases and tragic situations to come in and help our community and hand out food. We heard that we have a need, so we can hand out more food. And to have more people come out of their homes to volunteer, I know everybody wants help, myself included. However, we're, again, we're telling people to stay at home, shelter at home. We have this resource. Other counties have already deployed it very successfully. I believe Monterey County, Santa Cruz County, San Clara County, and I, I support it. I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So one of the things that I was, that I've been thinking about, well, two things really is, one is the process is handing out food. They're not, if they're not administering anything where you have to be in close contact. I mean, the map that first five laid out is pretty clear, it's very much about social distancing. And, you know, right now, we have school systems that are handing out food. You know, we have volunteers, you know, the cafeteria workers, which are not National Guards, handing out food. This is just handing out food. And then the other element is, we also have nonessential employees at home. And granted, I guess, if, you know, to a certain extent, you want to, if they're of that higher-risk population, then maybe you consider a trade-off, something that makes it more able for the younger folks to be able to do it. But again, this is just handing out food. And if we want to go the way of Santa Clara and San Jose, and I guess that's what the theme is. All I know is we're also telling our local nonprofits that we don't need your help. We need your help, and we want your help, but right now, we don't want your help. And to me, I don't think it's a good message to the public. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, thanks. No, I know for a fact, I was reached out and was asked that we're running into problems having enough volunteers to bag the food, get it distributed. And we've talked about this and trying to resolve this problem for the food bank, the nonprofit. And I really, really like the idea of having the National Guard here as a, as a resource to be used for this purpose and for any other purpose that may pop up, you know. Our volunteers in this community tend to be on the older side and the most vulnerable. National Guard, they're younger, they're disciplined, they're trained. And I think with the same type of program that we're seeing in Santa Cruz, they had a real good news article about that a couple of weeks ago on KSBW, how well it's working in this time of real need. We should be utilizing that resource like the rest of the state is doing. We already have COVID-19 in our community. So we're all relatively at risk as it is right now. It's better to have, you know, get the help that we could get. We need more supplies, and we got to keep pushing for that from our, the private, as well as the state and feds. And if we could get the National Guard here to help us with this task and any other task that may pop up, we should be doing that. And, you know, I've been part of different emergencies in the county and not have enough resources. Just recently, a couple of years ago, Lover's Lane flooded. Able to make a couple of rescues, but then the site was left unintended because we don't have any resources. And that's wrong. And something, we could have an earthquake, we could have something else happen in this county, and at least we got that resource right now in place. We'd be foolish not to be utilizing the National Guard for some of these tasks right now.
Thank you Supervisor Patel. Supervisor Medina?
Just one more thing to add. Looking at the National Guard coming on Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays to help out as humanitarian, we need to make sure we can depend upon Bonito Link, San Bonito Live, and Freelance to convey why they're here, to explain to our residents that they are here to help. And this way, it calms down everyone saying, oh, you know, they're coming down here to pull people over or so forth and so on. That's the main thing we need to do, and we have Mr. Westrick here. He would be our liaison also. So that's, that's the key to the success, is communicating. And, you know, everybody else knows how I feel about, about the National Guard. And just to answer Supervisor Hernandez's question about, we don't want the nonprofits. No, we're helping the nonprofits. What we're doing is we're alleviating some of the people that they have and providing them assistance. That's our job. Our job is to provide assistance. I've actually worked, I helped out with the homeless shelter, or the food bank, two Saturdays ago. And it's more than just handing out food. You have to pack the food also, that's, that's the majority of the, of the work there. So once again, I just, I feel it would be great to have the assistance of the National Guard. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Medina. My comments, and then I'll open it up for the public and then ask for direction of the board. My, my comment is that it is, right now, at this level, is just for the food bank, which I'm not, I'm not inclined to support bringing in the National Guard for that. But I would support if, if the need arises for other activities that require more manpower. And at that point, I will support. But for today, right now, I just cannot support the National Guard to come in and provide. I think Supervisor Hernandez is correct. We do have nonprofits out there that are willing and able to help out and assist in the crisis that we are today. In fact, I just, I just read the other, last night, that actually a military person died of a coronavirus. I just, I just heard that somewhere last night, I read it somewhere, I don't know, it's CNN or Fox, I don't know what channel. One of those two, you know, depending on what day I feel, I'll watch one channel or the other. But I don't want that to be in Seminole County. And it's just for food bank, which is a very important service in our community. And that's why I feel very passionate that members of the community can support. And actually Supervisor Hernandez did say that maybe we do have county employees that might actually even hop out. In fact, they are hopping out, my understanding, right now. That we have some employees that are hopping out, and I'm really grateful and thank those employees that are hopping out. But today, I cannot support it, and I won't support it if we make a decision to go in that direction today. Got Jim Gilio, I got Supervisor Gilio on the line?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two points I want to make really quickly. The 1989 Loma Prieta earthquake, just do a quick Google search on that. And the National Guard was used extensively during that time for humanitarian purposes. Again, no martial law, nothing happened there. And we had, I don't know if you remember that, we had, I remember because I was asked to sleep in a business as a teenager to make sure that their business didn't get looted. And we thankfully right now, and hopefully will never have that again, but we had that at that time. And even then, the National Guard wasn't used for any type of security or any type of law enforcement. We also have a National Guard base at our airport that's active. If you weren't aware of that, you can go out there and see them anytime. And I support this 100%. And we desperately need to have people that are trained to handle this, keep our people sheltered in place. And the comment about not supporting our, our nonprofits in our community, I take great offense to that. I, I support our nonprofits daily, monthly, financially, with my, my time and resources. And I can tell you that they, they have concerns as well about being out in the community right now. They want to be out in the community, don't get me wrong. And I totally support what Supervisor Hernandez said there. They, all they want to do is help, but they also realize the risk that they're, trying to helping and putting their members out in the public right now. So, you know, for me, we need to take advantage of this as soon as possible to make sure that our community stays fed and stays safe, and we keep as many of our community members home and safe as possible. And again, this will be a very strict mission for the National Guard. It's followed out exactly when they're going to be here, exactly what the mission is, exactly what they're going to do. And if we see something that is, makes anybody uncomfortable, we can, we can address that and, and change courses if we need to. But I think we really need to take advantage of this immediately before it's not available and other, other communities have the resource, and then we can feed our community. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gilio. I'm going to open it up to the public. Do you have any speakers?
Tell them to hit star nine.
No one?
So if you, if you're on the public, on the bottom of this screen, it has a raise your hand. Now's the time to do it. If you're on the phone, dial star.
Star nine.
Star nine. Okay, so we have one user, we're going to go ahead and unmute you. Please state your name first and last name for the record.
Hi, this is Siti Casta, county employee. Just calling in, I was one of the county employees that did volunteer at the food bank a couple of weeks ago. It was a lot of work, I enjoyed every second of it. We packed bags, we distributed. There were five of us that were there along with another group of probably five. We did a lot of the social distancing, we had gloves provided to us, we washed our hands, we kept very safe. But we served a lot of people. We were there for five hours, they extended the time for the food bank another hour because there were so many people to serve, so many people in line, it was done very orderly. And I would like to say that I think using the National Guard for a service like this would be immensely useful because there are people out there that are in need. If people from the community aren't stepping up or other employees aren't stepping up because of their own safety concerns, and the National Guard is there to do something like this, it would be crazy not to use them to provide this service. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next user, you're going to be unmuted. Wayne, go, go ahead.
This is Wayne Norton, and I'm frankly shocked that this is a controversy. I can't believe that there's actually a vote against bringing in trained, disciplined staff to, personnel to support our understaffed operation and county employees. These folks are nothing but things, they're highly disciplined and closely supervised. And I must say that I think that raising the specter of martial law was very unfortunate.
Thank you.
So it looks like that's it as far as comments?
Any other public comments? Please hit star nine now.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, closed comments. Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, well, one of the things I think we all have to understand as the board and the community, we're in a state of emergency. Is that, that's correct. And the other point that I think is very, very important that we all understand is that the CEO has some real broad authority under these circumstances. And I think he has the authority to utilize the, the resource of the National Guard and make that request, you know, as he sees fit. You know, and I'm sure taking a lot of counsel with his staff, the community, the nonprofits, and so forth. And I hope you understand that is a huge responsibility, and it's kind of your call. But under the circumstances, if we need to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to kind of support the OES office in coordinating the use of these resources with our nonprofits to make sure that our community is fed, I'm certainly willing to make a motion and, and support utilizing the National Guard in assistance with community nonprofits.
Is that a form of motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Of course, I probably should have waited till.
Yes, second.
Okay, you got a second. All right, the motion is to allow the CEO to use the National Guard for the, what is it, humanitarian?
Humanitarian.
Humanitarian. Humanitarian.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Against? No. Peter Hernandez, did you vote yes or no?
No.
Okay, it passes three to. Thank you. Okay, I got it. Thank you Supervisor Hernandez.
You know, and for clarification, I think as, as a board, need to understand that, you know, the CEO does have the authority to use the, you know, whatever resources he sees fit during a crisis and a declared emergency.
I totally agree with you Supervisor Patel. I don't know why the CEO brought it to our agenda. Just done it. Okay, let's move on to item number two. Oh, I'm sorry, are we done with item number one?
Yeah, I was just going to highlight, you know, that's, your board did give us direction to move forward with acquiring or looking at the National Guard. We have been working on that the last week and a half or so. We were ready to actually, it only takes 24-hour notice, so we were going to move forward with it. But I think it was just, is a wise decision just to bring it to your board to let you know what they would be doing. And also, I think Supervisor Mark Medina hit the nail on the head. This is to notify the public what we're doing. So this is a first step in that communication with the public, what we're going to do. And we just wanted to share that with the board, what the action, you know, what the National Guard was going to be utilized for moving forward. And obviously, it's good that you guys had a healthy conversation and give us some direction as well with that, appreciate that.
Thank you.
There was one more thing, if I may, through the chair. Dealing with a letter or anyone showing that they're essential workers. I live, I work in another county, and sometimes we do have people getting pulled over. And the law enforcement individual will ask, are you an essential person? So the company that I work for, we have a letter, and a lot of the companies in the neighboring counties have letters stating that. Do we see anything like that that we need here, or what is the idea from that?
For employees, all employees have a badge, and in there, it actually says disaster worker, so.
How about other people that work?
As a, and that's something we can work with, with staff on assisting that. We will be discussing that in closed session as well.
Thank you.
And then we'll probably bring that back to the board.
Okay, thank you.
On a future day, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, let's move on. Barbara Thompson?
This is a proposed ordinance which would prohibit evictions due to lack of non-payment for items related to the COVID-19 pandemic. I should note that there is an order that was recently, an executive order that was recently propounded or set out by the governor. Our order follows the model of several other counties, and it's a bit more broader than the state order in the sense that it prohibits both commercial and residential evictions. And it's also slightly different in how it approaches it because the state order prohibits the execution of orders while this one actually prohibits the order, the commencement of an unlawful detain reaction. So it's a little bit more protective. I'm going to read the title of the ordinance for the record. It's an urgency order of the state of, ordinance of the state of California, County of San Bonito, State of California, enacting a temporary prohibition on COVID-19 pandemic-related evictions. And this is necessary because basically, there is a large, there might be several, many people that could. because basically, there is a large, there might be several, many people that could experience a loss of income due to COVID-19. And this restricts evictions during this period of time, which only goes right now through May 31st. It does not prohibit or reduce the obligation of the tenant to pay the landlord rent. It just, so that rent is accruing and would be due to the landlord, but it does prevent the evictions during this period of time due to the fact that we need to make sure that people have shelter during this time and that they're not evicted because they don't have the ability to pay if they have lost their job or had their business closed due to COVID-19.
Okay, thank you. I only have, I only have a question, I guess more of a, a comment to my fellow supervisors is that is, I think this is a great program. I think it's a good thing that's coming down from the state of California because there will, there will be a lot of members of our community that'll be facing that harsh reality of putting food on the table or paying the rent. And, and I get it. I'm just wondering if somehow we could also help out the homeowners in which, you know, property taxes will be due pretty soon, and somehow we should also extend it to their May 31st, 2022, to help out the property owners too. I mean, I, I know we got a letter from the tax collector, Melinda, but I think we as a board, we should take the lead on it and say that we're going to help out the, the landowners too. Those are just my comments. Supervisor, Supervisor Patello?
Yeah, and from my understanding, this is not a forgiveness of rent. This is just, just a suspension of the eviction process. But, you know, property owners do have a right for their back rent, and hopefully they work with their tenants to make those accommodations. And so I, I'm very supportive of this. You know, I, I have some property that I rent out, and, you know, if somebody has lost their job or have closed because they're a nonessential business, hopefully landlords will work with their tenants and make accommodations to get through this real rough time. That's rough for a lot of people. But it's not a forgiveness of any liability.
Any other?
The chair, if I may?
Supervisor Hernandez?
Yeah, I, after thinking through your, your statement, I, I would totally support whether that means we, we would ask the CEO to bring Melinda in to see what we're doing as a county to extend some kind of grace period for, for a property owner or, because I, I just know, you know, property owners themselves, just because they own property doesn't mean that it's debt-free. They, they themselves have their own liabilities to pay for not who you talk to. So I, to be consistent, if, if we're going to extend, which I support, you know, the, the, not a lot, you know, basically making sure we're, we're not allowing people to be kicked out on the street from not being able to pay their rent because of that nonessential, or, or their business just the same, then maybe there needs to be some kind of a grace for, 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 yeah, for the, the homeowners that, that owe the debt on these liabilities. And whether it's a forgiven, I mean, ultimately, like Supervisor Patel said, it's, it's not a forgiveness, which makes it, it, it makes it tough all the way around because that basically means now instead of this month, yes, you don't have to pay it, but now you have two months worth of rent next month. And it's going to pile up more and more. So, so it still creates a burden that somehow needs to get relieved or at least get a trust. Those are my comments.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Thank you. Go ahead, right?
That's okay. Did you want to go?
Yeah, let me go first.
All right, actually, I got another supervisor on this.
Yeah, he takes priority.
Supervisor Gilio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Barbara, thank you very much for spending so much time getting this rolling. We started this process late last, or actually early last week, maybe even late the week before. But what happened was between now and the time we started working on this, obviously, as Barbara probably mentioned there, the, the state came up with their own statewide eviction relief program for COVID specifically. And again, not a, not a forgiveness. So what I was hoping we could do is match up our, our ordinance with the state ordinance so we don't have conflicting ordinances or, or orders, so to speak. And again, this needs to be only related to COVID based on the, the time that perhaps we, we look at it as a time that we declared the state of emergency in the county, or perhaps another date that we can discuss. But critical, the other thing that you guys brought up about landlords, so one thing for property owners that, that the state has done is they've worked with many banks, I don't have the exact number, especially California-based banks, to provide mortgage forgiveness for homeowners and then also people that rent out to different, you know, whether it's a tenant or a commercial building, whatever it is, it's, you know, a loan forgiveness, it's not a forgiveness, excuse me, I used the wrong word there. It's a loan extension, essentially what they're doing. I believe it's 90 days. So you have 90 days to not pay your mortgage payment. If you make arrangements with your bank, don't just go out and do it without making the, the arrangements, obviously. And then what happens to the amount of the mortgages, it just gets passed on to the end of the loan. So it's not that the, the payments are going away or you're getting credit for making payments you didn't make. It's just extending it on to the end of the, the mortgage. And then regarding the property taxes, we have been having a lot of conversations with our tax collector about this. I've been watching what other counties are doing. And there are specific statutory requirements regarding property taxes, even the ability to collect like partial property taxes. And this would be much better to hear directly from Melinda Cius, our tax collector. However, it, it's, there's, I believe there's one county in the state or definitely in our region, which is Santa Clara County, that can accept partial property tax payments. We're not able to select or receive partial property tax payments, number one. Number two, the other thing we need to think about about property tax because I believe, what, maybe Supervisor Medina can comment on this, but we also obviously, you know, everybody knows or hopefully you know that we get 11 cents on the dollar of property tax. And we have to, in turn, collect that and redisperse that to different agencies such as local districts, special districts, you name it, the state, everybody, the city halls, their city cell, one, the key there. So making a, a decision, even if we're able to make that decision, which we may not be able to because of the laws that are in place, would have a rolling impact on people down the road. So what Melinda Cius has previously agreed to do is folks that have a legitimate COVID-related issue that are unable to pay their property tax and they have that ability, she's said that Melinda's willing to work with those people, take a look at that, and perhaps, and I don't want to speak for Melinda, but perhaps not charge the equipment fees and that sort of thing. So she's already working on that. She's on top of it. But, and then I believe her office sent out a letter or a correspondence last week that we posted on social media as well. So hopefully the word is getting out. There is some flexibility to work there. And again, Barbara, thank you for spending so much time on this. And thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Gilio. Supervisor Medina?
Yes, one thing is, maybe we can put this on the agenda for, I mean, I know it's three days before the taxes are due, but on the seventh. Reason why I'm saying is just to educate everyone. Because what it is, as I understand, I've been working on this for the last three weeks. Couple of my constituents called and I started the ball with Melinda. One of the issues you have, as Supervisor Gilio stated, is a majority of the dollars, they're not ours. They're not the county's. They're going to different entities. So the second part is I believe it has to be a mandate from the state. And that's where I think we can, in the next week, we can talk to Melinda and we can make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. But personally, I would love to go ahead and move forward with this, saying, hey, there's, let's give you a little bit, a little bit of leniency on this. But if we don't have the authority to do it, then we, we don't have the authority. So I want to make sure that I'm speaking correctly before, and if we are, if we can't, let's let people know on the seventh why we didn't proceed forward with something similar to this.
Right. And we all understand that these dollars don't particularly go just to the, to the county. We, we all know that. We've all been educated on it. All, all we're saying, all I'm saying is, you know, just that penalty, that delayed penalty, once the date comes in, don't, don't charge that penalty. Give an extension, you know, up to maybe May 1st or July 1st to, to allow the homeowners to, they eventually have to pay. Absolutely, they all have to pay. We're not going to give them a free ride. They have to pay. Just a little diddity, all I'm asking for. And so it'd be beneficial to us and to the community to, you know, ask if Melinda could come in and, you know, give a presentation on what are, what options are available. Absolutely. And that's.
Go ahead.
And that's besides the point because what's today is the.
Yes.
The eviction notice. But we'll definitely put that at the next agenda meeting. Okay.
We'll leave it as that.
All right, thank you. Let me open up to the public. Just discussion on the eviction notice. You have any speaker, any speaker cards?
Hello, this is Melinda. Can you hear me?
Yes, madam.
Um, yes. So I do not have the ability to change the due date on property taxes. However, as I've spoken to a couple of supervisors, we will analyze the property taxes that we were able to collect at the, through the end of April. And then we will put into place a couple of plans to deal with the COVID virus. So I can't, I'm not at liberty to say what those plans are at this moment. However, they will, I will keep you informed of our plans as we move along.
Thank you. Because it's not on the agenda, we can't discuss with it. But thank you very much for that information. Okay, you have any other speaker, speaker cards?
Anybody wishes to do a public comment, hit star nine now, please.
And I should address the one issue that was raised by Supervisor.
You want to hold on?
Okay.
Till we done, public comment? Done? Okay, I'll close it. Barbara?
I did want to address the one issue raised by Supervisor Gilio to make it consistent with the state ordinance, I meant state order. I'm recommending that we don't respectfully because ours is a little bit more protective in that it protects against commercial evictions as well. And if we made it totally consistent with the state order, then there would be, it would not be as protective. So our, our recommendation is that we remain with a little bit more protective local ordinance than the state exists currently.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Thank you, Barbara. I didn't, I didn't want to infer that it be any, I just want to make sure there wasn't any conflicts that would create a legal issue, but that's not a great thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Gilio. Is there a motion on the table or there's further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number, is that the right number?
Yeah, we need to waive further reading, accept introduction, and adopt urgency ordinance. And I do not have the number.
1007.
Oh, okay. Waive the, the reading and.
Accept introduction.
And approve ordinance 1007.
Adopt the ordinance. Yeah, 1007.
Right.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
I need to make sure it's clear that it's just a four-fist vote because it's an urgency ordinance. Urgency ordinance requires four-fist vote.
Medina?
Yes.
Noah Cruz?
Yes.
Patello?
Yes.
Gilio?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Five zero. Perfect. Thank you. Good job, guys. Okay, now we'll go to closed session. We'll actually stay in here and close session. Thank, it's a good idea, Mark, to stay in here. Barbara?
Okay, two items for closed session. The first one is closed.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to discuss those items with the board? None? Okay, we'll go to closed session. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to discuss those items with the board? None? Okay, we'll go to call session.